No justice, no peace. I'm Kalia.
I'm Natalia.
I'm Sierra.
And welcome to The Take. Before we get into today's podcast, we just wanted to say that we're so excited to get back into releasing podcast episodes. In our last podcast series, we talked with educators, community leaders, and district representatives about maintaining our resolution during the shift in superintendence. Since that series came out, we're happy to say we've been able to stay in contact with the district and make sure that our boards are heard. Also, as you can tell, we have some new members to our team and they want to introduce themselves to y'all.
Hey, I'm Natalia Lee and I am currently a junior at DMOK. I'm a new member of the No Justice, No Peace podcast team as of last summer. And I am excited to boost student voice to the surface level, bring awareness to social issues, and help better not only our community but multiple communities.
Hi, my name is Sierra Noel and I'm a junior at DMOK. And I got introduced to the No Justice, No Peace podcast last summer as well. It has allowed me to learn more about myself and my history, which helps engross me to inspire and improve my future at the community.
So I'm sure you're wondering what's up this week. In today's episode, we're going to be talking to some of our school by candidates and see why they want to be on the board, what changes and improvements they want to make to DPS, and the commitment to the education of DPS students.
Welcome and thank you for joining us on The Take. Before we get started, we have to remind our listeners about our trigger alert. Sierra, can you please read the trigger alert?
If you are not 110% in support of As Matter, please dismiss yourself. If you aren't in any sorts of agreement with the systematic oppressions that this country has inflicted on minorities, again, please dismiss yourself. If you are not willing to give every bit of power that the people so undeniably deserve, then please dismiss yourself, because in a few moments, you will witness vast amounts of black engagement. And if you do not dismiss yourself, then the thoughts, facts, and feelings we are about to share will most definitely dismiss you. Okay, so let's get into it, y'all. Thank you for coming on today. Hello, Ms. Olson, Ms. Villagraina. Am I saying that right?
Villagraina.
Villagraina?
Yes, perfect.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hey, Dr. Olson and Villagraina. We so have you guys on today. And before we get started, can each of you provide our listeners with some information about yourself to include what motivates you to want to become a board member?
Well, I just wanted to thank y'all for having me here today. My name is Carolina Villagraina. And I am running for school board District Two of Southwest Denver, so on the other side of town where you are currently located. And I want to bring it to a time as to what motivated me into education in general. And so I remember my second day of college at the University of Colorado Denver. And I was a first generation and even though I had two older brothers who like gone through the process, it was still different for me because I was a girl. And so what I mean by that is that my parents only said, "You could only stay in town." And when in town meant you could only go downtown. And so it was CU Denver for me. And I could talk more about that later as to how it made me feel. But it was the second day of college. And I remember I was rushing to class as I thought I was late and I was wearing heels. Note to self, don't wear heels on campus. But I was entering my psychology class, one of your first initial science classes that you take as a freshman. And you know, what I thought would have been a regular sized classroom, I stepped in and it was the size of an auditorium, you know, like those big movie theaters. And it got nearly fit like 200 students. And my heart dropped because it was the biggest classroom I had ever been in. And at the same time, when I was, when I looked to look who was in the space, I didn't see anyone who looked like me. And it left me broken because it left me wondering, like, wait, what happened to my Latino and Black brothers and sisters? Like, why aren't we here? And as you know, you know, that was back then, the story is still very common. We're still being left, we're still being left behind to really have that life full of options and choices that we ultimately want to achieve. And that for me motivated me to get involved. And my college experience, I would say, was very transformational, especially when, as I studied ethnic studies as a minor. And I came to realize that a lot had been left out of my education in terms of my culture and then learning about others' cultures as well. And you know, like, I'm embarrassed to say, but something I have to say, I was like, I used to go by Carol back in the day. And it wasn't until a professor says, "It's not Carol, it's Carolina," is what he would say, "Dr. Insignias from UCD." And it was then when I fell in love with not only my culture, but fell in love with who I was and fell in love with like having that confidence that I should have had a lot sooner. And so that experience kept me driven in school and focused. And you know, as I was wrapping up my senior year of college, I sat on a panel for a local high school. And as questions were already pre-written out and we passed them out to each other with the other seniors who were on the panel. One stood out to me because it was written in Spanish. And it said, "A veces siento que no merezco ir a la universidad." Which translates to, "At times I feel as if I do not deserve to go to college." And it made me angry. It made me angry because it was like, what, what has been in the students' experience and the experience of others that led them to ask if they deserve, rather like, our students deserve, y'all deserve, we deserve, little Carolina back in the day deserved the best, right? And we shouldn't have be questioning or doubting, but rather knowing, saying like, hey, we're here and we're ready to make that difference and do the work, right? And so as I started off kicking off my campaign, one of the things and one of the reasons why I'm really excited here is I could think about what all the issues that I think of, you know, I've been a teacher, I've been in this space. But at the same time, I was like, but my perspective is only a snippet, right? And I'm really excited to also hear what yours' perspective is as to what should be changing in the classroom, what should be changing to the day-to-day work. Because I've seen my kiddos disengage at fourth grade and where we should actually be transforming the same education that keeps us motivated and driven each and every single day. So I'm here to help with the work that we need to all put in.
Thank you. My name is Dr. Carrie Olson and I'm running for reelection in District Three of Denver Public Schools. And I agree, thank you so much. I agree with Carolina. Thank you for having us here today. I love hearing how students are getting involved in campaigns and hearing about who's going to represent on the Board of Education. As you know, I was in favor of having students vote for the student board, I know, or for the Board of Education. I know that bill ended up dying at our legislature. But I think students really need to understand who's representing them on the Denver Public Schools Board of Education. I think there's two ways I'm going to answer the question that you asked of us. I'd like to go back to why I ran four years ago and then why I want to continue to serve on the Denver Public Schools Board of Education. Four years ago, I was a classroom teacher. I had no desire to be a politician or be even be sitting here today. But leading up to the point where a friend of mine asked me to run, I had had some experiences with, in Denver Public Schools that weren't equitable for my students. And the first one was when I was a teacher at Keppner Middle School, where I had taught, I taught in DPS for 33 years, but 27 of my years were on the West Side. So I messaged Carolina before this and I said, "We should talk." I often tell Angela Covian that I know her district better than she does because I taught there almost longer than she was alive. But when I was at Keppner Middle School, the district decided that Keppner was labeled for redesign slash closure, and it was so hard on the community. As you girls know clearly, I created an educational travel experience for 800 students on the West Side, where I took students to Washington DC and Europe over 27 years. And they experienced many of the similar experiences that led you to create the No Justice, No Peace Resolution, which I'm proudly wearing today in honor of the podcast. And I was so disheartened to see how the student voices weren't listened to in that process and the families' voices weren't listened to. And so many things were done to us at Keppner instead of done with us. And schools are such a hub for communities. And our, our school was open late at night, early in the morning, on the weekends, soccer tournaments, yard sales. In the evening, we'd have meetings, kids would come in and out. We had a school-based health clinic. And so much of that was lost for years. I understand Keppner now is stronger and is coming back to be more the center of the community, which is fabulous. But at that time, I really began to understand the power that people have who are on the school board. And then when I moved to West High School and I taught middle and high school, I became an ELS teacher for high school social studies. And that was another touch point for me where I realized, even though we're under the modified consent decree, we still did not have equitable resources for my Spanish-speaking students. I taught high school social studies in Spanish with a fifth-grade textbook without images. And that was very inequitable. And so those are two stories that I tell that really stirred me up. So by the time somebody came to me and said, "You should run for the Board of Education", I was like, "No, but maybe I'd be interested in learning more about what that means." Because I wanted to be able to lift up the voices of the community and the teachers and the students, which I felt weren't often listened to. So I ran to do that. And as you're well aware, over my tenure, I've taught with, or I've led with five superintendents in a pandemic and a teacher's strike. So many of the things that I had got on the board to work on, I have not yet had a chance to complete that work. So I'd like to continue my work on the school board, to be able to continue to work in partnership with our new superintendent, Dr. Alex Marrero. I'm really proud of the process that we ran. We had the first-ever student-led forum for a superintendent search where students created the questions. I didn't even have a hand in creating the questions, other than setting the time where he and the other candidates were going to be there. The school board just said, "We want the students to have a forum." We had 71 community members interview three finalists. It went from the days of where things were hidden and not as public and how we selected a superintendent to really honoring the voices of the community in our superintendent search. I think he's the right person for the job. I love how he always talks about what's the experience of the student in the seat, not the label on the school. And he really leads with his ear to the ground and listening to the community on his listening tour. And so I think we still need a teacher on the Board of Education who always thinks of students first and that relationship that students and teachers build in the classroom, and somebody who can continue to work with Dr. Marrero and three new board members. I'm well aware that I'm the only incumbent running and we have three board members who have two years of experience and we'll have three brand-new board members. And I think we need one person who's been on the board for four years to continue to help keep some continuity. And I'm dedicated. Denver Public Schools has been a part of my life since 1985. I want to hit that 40-year mark. I was going to teach till I got my 40-year pin, but since I had to leave my profession to serve on the board, I didn't get it. My daughter went to Denver Public Schools all her life and graduated from George Washington High School. It's a very important relationship and I would be honored to be able to continue to represent the students and the families and the staff of Denver Public Schools.
I love how your personal experiences tie into the reasoning as to why you want to be on the school board for Denver Public Schools. So in the sequential order of Ms. Villagraina and Dr. Olson, what do you see as your roles and responsibilities on the board? And what do you believe is the most important responsibility of a board member?
One of the things I value most and really think it's core to our work is voice and partnership. And I, I say that because I recall the experience that my mom had when she enrolled my oldest brother into school. And one of the things that they did automatically without my mom's consent was, or asking for permission, was enrolling him automatically in a bilingual classroom, just because we spoke Spanish at home. Now, my mom went to go try to address this concern, but she was, she was left ignored, right? And she felt voiceless and she felt powerless. So she wanted to give it a chance. And what ended up happening when she went to go observe as to, you know, what was in the bilingual classroom, she noticed a difference between the bilingual classroom and that of the mainstream English classroom. She said, this is something that she's shared with me, she's like, "I saw no teaching in one classroom, the bilingual classroom, and I saw teaching in the English classroom." And that was with my oldest brother. And so she, of course, felt ignored. So voice was ignored. And then also she felt that because we were Latino, because we spoke Spanish, that we were receiving less than. And so because of her, I say she was, you know, an advocate for quality education. She's the one that motivated and driven me. But really brings me into the same moment of time as our, our voices are still being ignored as to what we need for us, for our Black and Latinos kids, students. And so what I really hope to do and bring is our voices and making sure that's elevated. It really can make a difference in terms of what the students' experiences are in the classroom. The second piece is going back to, you know, having that, hearing that student asking if he deserved. And rather making sure that each and every single day, we have the opportunities to really engage and expand onto what learning could look like for us, right? Like, it shouldn't be less than. And it's the reason why we have these challenges in the long term as to what are our opportunities. And many times, they are limited because other people are making the decisions for us. And so what I really hope to do is also partner both with students like y'all and also with, with loved ones. When I say loved ones, I reference families, parents, guardians, you know, it could all look different. So, and the reason why that's so important for me, because I acknowledged as to how challenging it was for my parents to navigate the system when I went to school. And something when I became a teacher, that was something that I made sure that parents' voices felt valued in the decisions that were happening every single day as an educator. And one thing I told parents is that, you know, I was only in their child's life for one year, right? Like, one year is very insignificant when you think about it. But it's truly parents and loved ones who are the true advocates from kindergarten all the way through 12th grade. They are, your parents, your loved ones are your lifelong advocates. And so if I'm able to partner with them, then that could also lead to huge transformation as to what we see in, in Denver Public Schools.
Thank you, Carolina. There's so many intersections that you and I have, but I'll do a little spin on how I see it. Because I agree 100% on the role and responsibility is lifting up community voices, especially the people who are in our system, like the students for sure, and their families, and teachers, and everybody in the school holds a piece of what we really need to be able to do. Because if you think of how this works, like the school board, the seven of us have one employee, and that's a superintendent. So we set the mission and vision and policies for how we want to direct him to carry out things in our, in our school system. But we're accountable to you and your families, because you and your families and the communities are the ones who put us in this seat. So we are really your voice on that board. So we are the ones who are saying, "This is what the community is telling us to do." So I can't emphasize enough how important hearing from the community is in us setting the mission, vision, and the policies in our, in our school district. But I think in order for us to be able to effectively govern our superintendent and understand how things are being carried out, I value being physically present in places. Okay, so COVID has made that a little bit harder. But I've tried to, still during COVID, when I couldn't go in schools, I tried to attend as many Zoom meetings as I could. But before that, I learned so much just by walking through schools. So even if it's just a quick half hour, although I like to spend more than a half an hour, but I understand people are busy, walking in and out of classrooms, talking with school leaders, talking with the food and nutrition staff at schools, talking with the custodial staff, the paraprofessionals, the front office, helping me to understand what each school needs. Because every school is different. It's like a microcosm of Denver and each school system and each, or each school and each school's community. So in order for us to best understand what schools need and what's going well and where we could improve, it's really important for the board to be out in the community. I think of during the pandemic when we were helping distribute meals and technology, it was good just to hear from people to be able to be the ones to say, "Your board is here. We're present. We're listening to you." I think of the work that I've seen you all do over the years with No Justice, No Peace and our Tamara Acevedo and academics and Theo Shaw saying, "We love this work and we started it, but we're strengthened by having the students. That's what this is all about, right?" Like, building that partnership to make sure it's sustainable. I also think it's really important that we as board members always think of how we can make our work more permanent so that every board member who comes on in the seat, no matter whose it is, knows that it's their duty to get out into the community and then take that back to think about the policies that we need to create to better serve all of our students. And I think you also asked, "What is the most important one?" And I think the most important role and responsibility is taking community voice and bringing it back to the board table. And by saying, by community, I mean the students, the families, the teachers, and anybody in our system. And then bringing that to the board level, not just what I want, but what I'm hearing that people want out on the street.
Thank you. I love how both of you are so community-centered, because a lot of the work that we have done has been directly to benefit the students and the people in our community. And it's just great to hear that we have two people who are, who share similar loves that we do with like community. And speaking of the pandemic that you mentioned, Dr. Olson, during the pandemic, you know that students suffered from a lot of trauma just from being out in the world in general, being stuck at home, maybe struggling through school. So I want to ask both of you, well specifically Ms. Villagraina, what supports would you have put in place for students and staff during the process of coming?
You know, as a teacher, something before, like, so I was, I've been a teacher kindergarten through eighth grade, right? But I was most recently in elementary. So I always think about, I always use more of an elementary lens than high school. So I apologize if this comes off as a little too kiddish, but, but it's true, I think, in no matter for what age and for who, as an educator. One of the things that even before starting the morning, it was really key to my classroom is doing like an emotional and wellness, like just check to see how my students were doing, right? This was way long before pre-pandemic even ever happened. And I noticed just like the difference of being able to know where students were emotionally and mentally when entering their classroom or entering my classroom, which allowed me then to know how to support them before diving into, to learning. Because if they weren't, you know, emotionally or mentally present, then it didn't matter as how great my lesson was that day. Or, you know, at the end of the day, learning would be like minimal. And one of the things I think needs to be true, or could still be true to no sense, is that upon returning, really making sure that, you know, we, the pandemic was a stressor for everyone. I supported through the pandemic with supporting teachers. I taught remotely as well during the pandemic. And I also did checkups on my students. And I think in, before diving right into academics, we need to make sure, and we still need to make sure that everyone is mentally and emotionally have the supports to be then academically engaged. And so I would have prioritized that person for most in making sure that, you know, we have the services that are, that DPS could provide. And then there's this extension of, we have amazing community organizations that could also partner with us. And so I would want to have made sure, or make sure that we are tapping into those community resources that provide those supports. And I think there's a piece of, you know, two, the pandemic was two years. It is, sometimes it feels like, it felt like it was a year, a year and a half. Yeah, right? We're still in it, is what I say. And I think one of the things is like, we need to meet our kids where they are at. And that's ultimately being able to find where that is, so then we can make a plan on how to move forward.
So I, I can tell you a couple of things I think we did well and then where I think we, we could have done a better job as a board. I'm really proud of the fact nobody lost their job. And I'm proud of the fact that we fed the city of Denver. I don't know if you've heard this story, when we first started distributing meals, we were told you could only give them to students. And as we were distributing them, there were family, there were adults who were crying and they're like, "We don't, we've lost our jobs." I just was like, okay, I can't not give food to people. So I just started giving meals to adults. And then thankfully to the Denver Public Schools Foundation, they picked up that tab and over a million dollars to be able to feed the adults. So I think, and we continued that until school started in the fall of 2020. So, and it continues on, actually, I shouldn't say it stopped. But I'm really proud of the fact that we were able to feed people, because in the beginning days of the pandemic, hunger was even more real than it is now. I think we do forget to see that there are people in our system who are hungry. And that was surely brought out to the front during the pandemic. So I'm proud of that. I'm proud of the work we did around getting technology out to everybody. Again, not perfect. We were not as prepared to the one-to-one learning as we could have been. And having said that, I spent a lot of my days in schools cleaning the Chromebooks that were on carts that were just abandoned in the hall or whatever. Because if you'll remember, school closed so quickly. And then we had to go in and collect them in inventory and barcode them. I'm glad that we had a lot of teachers and staff and paraprofessionals. It was all hands on decks. Board members, all of us were in schools getting technology out, and it wasn't enough. We had long lines. I remember being at the Evy Dennis Campus and being with Director Anderson, and we were the ones who had to tell people, "You're not getting a laptop today and we don't know when that will happen." So that's, that was something we could have done better. We could have pushed harder earlier to make sure everybody had technology. I think another area where we were, it was a mixed bag and getting communication out. I know Susana Cordova, our superintendent at the time, and I did over 200 Facebook Lives in English and in Spanish every day in the first couple of months of the pandemic, just to get the information out and take questions. And then we'd take the information that we got from that and we'd craft communications to send out to families and students. And sometimes it wasn't timely enough. And I think as we came back in the fall with schools opening, closing, having operational closures, there was a lot of mixed information about what was happening. And we needed to have clear communication sent out to families. And I think that still can be a challenge in our system, that our communication isn't as clear as it could be around COVID protocols. But I think we've gotten better around technology. And I think the big thing that we've learned from all this as well is mental health resources. I know that there are still students who are suffering effects from the pandemic and need more one-to-one counseling, more one-to-one time to talk with someone. A lot of my friends are middle school teachers and they'll talk about just having that time in the morning, the 20 minutes of social emotional learning to say, "How's it going?" You know, and they'll say things like, "My best friend doesn't want to sit with me at lunch anymore and we have assigned tables because of COVID and now we're not friends and we can't move." Or I think of a high school girl who told me that her crush asked her out and she hadn't been in person for so long, she just stared at him until he walked away. And her friends were like, "Why didn't you say anything?" She's like, "I haven't been face-to-face in front of a guy in a long time. I didn't know what to say." I think there's just a lot more work we can do around supporting our, our students and our staff. I know some of our staff have really had a hard time because they're at that moral burnout where they see there's so much more they want to be able to do for their students and their families to be able to help them get access to resources. And they're just not able to because we're very understaffed. I think at any given day, Denver Public Schools is missing 20% of its substitute teachers. And I know there's schools that still aren't fully staffed due to the pandemic and in transportation. But people are getting burned out and we need to be able to take care of the employees that we have.
Speaking about supporting students and staff, so in 2019, DPS experienced an increase in gun violence, assault, and theft. Dr. Olson, as a parent of a DPS graduate and a former teacher, what are your thoughts about the safety concerns within the district? And what is your plan to address those issues so that students and staff feel safe?
I think the most important thing we need to do is go back to each individual school and say, "What is your individual concern that you have around safety and security? And how is that playing out in your school?" Because like you said, as a, as a parent and as a teacher. So as a parent, my daughter attended George Washington High School and I never once thought about her being unsafe. And she never mentioned feeling unsafe in the school, that she understood what lockdowns were, she understood what she needed to do. She probably understood it better than I did, actually. Because when I was a teacher at West, I taught a lot of students who came here as undocumented students who came from places where law enforcement officials did not provide comfort. They invoked fear. So I had to talk a lot with my students about why, at that time, as you know, we voted to remove SROs from our school buildings. But at that time, when I taught at West, we did have SROs. And for some of my students, it was very traumatic to have the first person who greeted them in the morning with someone who had a, who was a police officer at our front door. So I had to talk with them about this person is actually not here to harm you, but to help you. But overcoming that, that was really hard for my students to be able to understand. So that's why I say we need to talk with each individual school and understand what, what are the needs for your school? Why are people feeling unsafe or feeling safe in your school? And what can we as a district do to help? Because I, I think it's hard to say one size fits all in each one of our schools. Because I, I think it's hard to say one size fits all in each one of our schools right now. I've heard from some of our school leaders who are saying, I'm not worried about violence in school. I'm not worried about my students are doing to each other. I'm worried about some of the increase in crime we're seeing outside of the school walls. Due to the in, due to the pandemic, honestly, there's a lot of um violence in some of our neighborhoods because people are tired and they're hungry. And they're, and they might not, they might be experiencing unemployment. There's just a lot of variety and societal issues that are starting to come into our school walls. So I think it's really important to talk with our schools and talk with our safety and security team and how are they understanding this? And speaking with students, you know, I think that student's voice is also really important this. What makes you feel safe at school? Where do you see that we need um extra supports?
Um, I love how you mentioned how not every school has the same exact problems and that's how you go like, that's how you go about. Um, making the changes that you do need to make for every school. And I think that would make DPS um more safer for the staff and the students. But for my next question, um Ms. Viagra, I can answer first and then Dr. Olson. So what is your plan to make sure that all of the changes within the district are centered around student achievement?
Thank you for um this question. And when I think about student achievement, I think about what is the progress that we want students to see? And what is, what does that mean for our kids, right? And before the pandemic, you know, the reality is that the numbers were abysmal in comparison to our achievement rate within black and Latinos. In comparison to our white counterparts. Like, one, why is that happening? And two, why are we letting that happen? It's always something that really makes me angry. And then three, that I think about and as to what are the, what are the structures and systems that we're putting into place? And so when I think about this, I think first and foremost as to. What, what is our, what are the educational pathways and readiness look like for each, you know, from elementary to middle school to high school? And it really is means starting, starting young, right? Starting in elementary. You know, I, as a teacher who went from middle school to elementary, you know, I had taught um seventh grade. And one of the things that came to surprise me when I was teaching that they were on a third grade, what was compared to a third grade reading level, right? So I was left wondering as to like, is this a language barrier or what was this more of like, just like poor instruction? Um, so I, when I went to elementary, I thought the, what we like, I thought. You know, there wouldn't be any like catching up in a sense, right? But in reality is I was teaching second grade and when analyzing their, like the datas and making a holistic picture. They were perform, are my kiddos were performing as what was equivalent to kindergarten level. And so my questions are as to what is happening early on? So that we're not having this road of catching up, which is exhausting for educators and exhausting for my students, exhausting for our kids, you know? And so I think it's really clearing, making clear benchmarks of what success looks like. And one of the most basic things that I think of in what I'm really putting stake on is lit, our literacy rates. Our students need to be reading by the end of second grade. Um, because when you think about that, th- then you're able to really engage and love the content that you're learning. Rather start, rather than doing both of trying to, you know, understand what's happening and then also trying to catch up, that's exhausting. And so that is a very key, key, basic um. Issue that I am putting my stake on in the ground of making sure that we're able to se- establish a strong foundation. I think the other piece is that we need to make sure that, you know. Uh, we're, we're really creating what I call meaningful metrics. You know, you all know that we take multiple like assessments throughout the year, right? But at the same time, I think what's also happening is in practice is that we're not fully connecting the dots together. So it's not just a collection of like collecting this data or doing the data points, is how are we effectively using them and analyzing them? And then you, so that your parents, your loved ones and teachers are able to really look at it and understand holistically. As to how you're performing. You know, for me, as um, I was in third grade and I was performing at the, so this is third grade. And it was nearly at the end of third grade, about to enter fourth grade. And I was per, I know this story because it was my story too. I was performing on a first grade level in third grade, about to enter fourth grade. That means kindergarten, first, second, third, four years went by in my educational career where my parents were lied to and deceived to, deceived. That I was okay. I was not okay, y'all. And it was because the information that my parents had were able to make a better decision for me. And I think that's truly, we need to do this in partnership with our loved ones. We cannot do this without them. And as a teacher, it's very much the same story that I did with my kids is finding out where they are, what are the supports that I can? And then how can I bring loved ones with, with us, right? What can they do at home if possible? And what, what is it something that they need to like focus on to really make the momentum that our students absolutely deserve?
Um, so again, I'll build off of what you said because I, I think similarly. Um, eh, from the school board position, what we need to be thinking about is what are the data, what does the data tell us? But also what is the stories? So I think one of the things you've seen us do over the last four years is we have begun to ask at every board meeting, we want disaggregated data. So what that means is when they say ninety percent of whatever students are doing X, we'll say, wait, tell us who those ninety percent are. Um, tell us the race, ethnicity, gender, um, whatever other information you can give us. So it's not just everybody jump, jumbled in together. And then by, what does this data mean? And I think that's really important to have the benchmarks to be able to say, where are our ninth graders? Where are our third graders? Where are our seniors? But it's also important to hear the stories because we all know that it's not just the test score, right? It's not just um your metrics, but it's also who you are. You want to be seen and known for who you are. But you also want to have a say in what and how you learn, hence your resolution, right? So we need to continue to make sure that the district is pushing for curriculum that is inclusive. So that you, that students see themselves represented in the curriculum. So it doesn't seem like it's something that's totally irrelevant and is only told from one lens. So that students want to engage and see themselves reflected in this and understand their place in history. So they see, are seen and known for who they are. And I learned that as a teacher, when I was traveling with students, I, I'll keep going back to the travel stories because that was so important for me. When I started traveling with my students, I didn't realize that it was gonna end up being something that would change the trajectory of both of our lives. But a lot of them came back and said to me, in fact, that's how I started doing the Europe trip from DC is they'd say, you know. Ms. Olson, I was able to tell my teacher that I actually saw the Constitution or I watched a Supreme Court hearing. Or I stood at the base of the Washington Monument and that was really cool. I want more. So it was that play of reading about something, experiencing it, but then lending their own view to it. And saying it wasn't travel that changed me, but I changed travel because I changed the narrative of who travels and what happens after that. And I think that's important for this because when students are excited about something that they're learning and they're given the opportunity to explore and take it. I mean, look at what you've done with one trip to Washington DC to one museum. Like imagine if all of our students could have experiences like that, that helped them recognize the power within themselves to change our educational system. For the better for all of our students. I think that's really important. And that goes back to another thing, I think you've heard Tamara and Theo talk to you about this is culturally responsive education. Because the goal of that is to create independent learners and that's what I would like to see for all of our students in our system. So that all of our students are able to pick up the material that's interesting to them, read it, think about it. And then think about how does this apply to my life and what could I build on for this? That'll help people better understand who I am and what my experience in the world is. And I'm really excited to see the training that we're doing around that. I'm an adjunct professor at the University of Denver and I work with some pre-service teachers. And sometimes when they come in and they're like, you know, those students, they don't care, they don't do this. I'm like, let's just check ourselves there and and chapter four is Reda Hammond where she talks about preparing to become a culturally responsive educator. Let's check our own bias and let's check how we're reacting to something students do. Because it's more about us than about the students. And I think it's really important as a leader that we are always examining our own bias and our own lens with which we come to this work. And I hope, I think I birdwalked, but hopefully I got somewhere in there the answer to your question.
Yeah, you definitely did. And going back to when you guys were talking about the concerns of whether it's safety or towards the pandemic. Or towards the curriculum representation. Uh, I'm sure that a lot of students, parents and community members have those same concerns as well. So using the order of Ms. Billy Goodanna and um Dr. Olson. How do you plan to not only hear, but also listen and act to acknowledge and elevate student voices?
I would say, when I think about how I would plan to hear and act, I think it's spaces like this. Um, having these conversations, having brave conversations, having conversations even in spaces as to things that. We may not want to hear, but we need to, we need to listen to, right? Uh, something uh as a teacher, I, I would always, when I felt something wasn't right. No matter how important the lesson was, I would say, we need to pause, we need to have a conversation. And the conversation could have been about motivation, con- conversation could have been about something that was happening in the space that was impacting the culture. Or just even the real conversation of what, what this moment in time means for us. I think very much in that same lens, that doesn't, I'm not going to change that practice. I'm going to open the space with conversations. And that's very much how when I launched the uh launched my campaign. I had um Cafecito checks, right? Posted them around at every single park within Southwest Denver. So I could hear parents and loved ones as to what they're experiencing right, right in this moment of time. This is over the summer, right? This is right before going back into school. And because I also acknowledge that like my experience is specific to me. But if I'm gonna be the representative for all our kids, our ninety thousand plus kids, plus our loved ones. Then I need to create the space to listen and hear that, right? I think there's this place of being able to act. And I think this is the reason why I feel really driven and motivated to run because of my, my expertise. Some of the things that ends up happening and I experiences as an educator myself is that decisions are being made. One, I always ask, why was this decision made, right? And then it was like, you just have to follow it, you have to implement it, right? And it led to moments of frustration, so sometimes it leads to moments of exhaustion. This is again before pandemic. Um, and it was never clear of the through line as to we're making policy. But in a protection, in a practitioner lens, as an educator, as either a teacher, school leader. It was never clear on how these decisions were made. And I think that's very much my goal is to be able to help design what is policy best in practice. So I could ultimately have the impact for both our educators and you all. And so that's very much the lens that I want to bring to the table of my educator lens. But also someone who's been, who's from this community and knows what, what our kids are experiencing on a daily basis.
I agree with um continuing to have um forums such as this. I think it's really important to have a structure for how we continue to receive student feedback. I've been the student voice and leadership liaison to the board along with Director Anderson. I'm proud to say that one of the things that Dr. Marrero promised when we interviewed him is that he'd create a student council and he's done that. And I think that's really helpful. He's got a representative from every high school that meets with him once a month and he has an executive team that meets once a month. And that group has been very active and has already shared things um with the board. And I'm still in touch with Solicia and Magnolia to understand what are on the students' minds. And I also know that's not enough because I was a high school teacher and I watched my student voice and leadership students sit and eat with their own friends at lunch. And I said, if you're a representational government, that means that you go sit with other people at lunch to hear what they have to say. So to that end, I meet with a group of students from George Washington High School who are not formally affiliated with any group who just, and we have no agenda. I just eat lunch some month, once a month and they can share with me what they're thinking. About before the pandemic, I did something similar at Denver Justice and at Emily Griffith High School. And so I'd love to see the board do more of those. I know that's one of the things that we're working on for board in the community section and our transition to policy governance is having a clear path. My idea would be even to have a calendar so that you would know, it would be easy. You'd go to the board website, you'd see a calendar, you see, oh, Carolina and Dr. Olson are gonna be at wherever at this time to meet with students. So you'd be able to have access to us. I think sometimes that's a challenge. Um, I also really va- value um that we start every board meeting with a student voice report. And I think that's been really helpful too. I know you have, you, the, some of you on this call have come to present to the board at our board meetings. But I like that the very first thing we do after the land acknowledgement is go to a student voice report. I also really proud of the alumni group that's worked with you and that's becoming more active. I'm sure some of you know that um an alumni is my campaign manager, one of my former students actually interviewed me when I asked him if he wanted the job to be my campaign manager. He said, let me think about that. And then he came back, I got a list of questions for you. His sister's my communications director. But I really value the voice of not just the students, but of alumni. Because they're, they've gone out, they've gone to college, they've got a job, they can look back and reflect too. And, and they often still have siblings in the system that help us better understand um what we need, we need to be doing. But I also would love to hear from you. I know you asked us that and you don't have to answer me now. I know that's not the space. But I think as we think about strengthening the board's relationship with our students, I'd love to hear more from our students on how we could do that better.
Thank you. We would definitely make sure to get back to you, all of us, about that question. But Dr. Olson, I did also wanna ask you, um, how will you plan to let students be involved in the curriculum? The decisions and commitments made to ensure that these changes are best for the students that they're actually affecting?
So in my role, in our role, the seven of us on the board, we only have one employee. So the only person we can really hold accountable to this is Dr. Marrero. So through him, we ask what's happening on the resolution for, so we'll use your resolution, then no justice, no peace. And then that's where Tamara and Theo Shaw, Tamara Seviedo and Theo Shaw have come back to report to us to say, here are the things that we've done. We also hear from Ednium and I'm, I'm sure we're gonna hear from you in the future as well and how you feel that that progress has been made. But it's through him that we ask for reports and updates. And we, then of course you get it, you know, this is also another open invitation to you. If you, if there's something you think that's not happening and you watch a board meeting and somebody's saying they're doing all this, you're like, wait, that's not what we're seeing. Again, remember, we're, we're put in these seats by you and your families and we're ultimately responsible to you. But the person that we hold accountable for all of this is just our superintendent. But we do ask for monitoring reports. So those, that's why we say, like in, in, you know, whatever month we want to report. And where are we with the um no justice, no peace resolution? Where are we with Ednium's financial literacy? And then we receive a board report and I believe that you'll be helping to create that report when Tamara Seviedo and Theo Shaw bring that to us.
It's really good to hear that you guys receive feedback off of what's going on, especially from the students and the family. I think that's really important. And Ms. Philigrana, I wanted to also ask you, um, do you recognize that there are systems of inequality in DPS? And this is also a two-part question. Just wanted to keep that in mind.
Um, for your, do I recognize that there are systems of inequalities? Absolutely. Um, I would say there are systems of inequalities in each and every single level. And ever since I've started to work with Denver Public Schools and it, it, it makes me, it makes me angry. I think in a sense as to. The system of inequalities already like I mentioned before is like. There's a difference of achievement rate even amongst our black and Latino students versus our, you know, white peers. There's a sense of inequalities of teachers, teachers of color who represent our communities. And for some reason that we don't have the numbers that represents our, our students that should be in the classroom. And I even push that to what's happening with our school leaders. You know, our school leaders don't represent our communities. And then even in the, you ask about the um, about curriculum. Yeah, I partnered with a lot of our, our partners in, in the district with curriculum. And they themselves are giving advice on how best to engage our students, how best to teach our students. Yes, they don't have the expertise, the level of expertise. Yes, they don't have the expertise, a level of expertise, especially amongst, you know, um, supporting our multilingual learner students. And so there's a, there's disconnect as to who we're serving and how we're serving our students. And multiple levels. I would say if I'm not allowed to push the envelope, then I shouldn't be allowed to be in the seats. And I think that's the reason why I'm here and something that I've already talked to, told Dr. Marrero is that we need to be at the table and part of these conversations. Because ultimately it impacts you all, it impacts my cousins who go to Denver Public Schools. It impacts my community and it means the world to me. And I want to really change the trajectory of what is being, the trajectory for our students.
Um, thank you for that. And I just really appreciate how you guys are both so dedicated. To not only being a part of these systems, but also really get into them and make sure that they work equitably for students like us. And this is that we hope to be impacted by the No Justice No Peace Resolution. And I wanna ask you, Ms. Via Grana, upon being elected, what is your commitment to bettering the education of black and brown students in this district? In collaboration with pre-existing um, efforts like the Black Excellence Resolution and our No Justice No Peace Resolution?
I will, I will bring my lens as an educator and the reason why I stepped into this, the space. And every single day when I stepped into the space as a classroom or the step into the space as a school administrator, as an assistant principal. Every single day, my question wasn't a matter of what's. What's our like absolute achievement rate? It's making sure each and every single individual of our students are achieving. And if we have someone who's not achieving, my question was always as to why, what do we need to do? And if it's, it was me, if I need, if I needed to, which I did often, I would roll up my sleeves. And do the work with our educators, especially when I stepped into school leadership. I am an absolute supporter of both resolutions. And I think we also need to ma- make sure that every school is implementing to the degree of quality that it should. We cannot just, and this is what makes me upset, we cannot just check off a box and said, we do, we're done, we're done, we did it. This work never finished. And I will also add that with the work of a consent decree, you know, there with servicing our multilingual learners. We need to make sure that they are one properly receiving the supports that they, that they deserve. I mean, it's legal, but it's the most basic form of, of call of equity. That we could provide our kids each and every single day. And so when I'm in this seat, I'm thinking about little Carolina. And I'm thinking about the room of that two hundred plus students. And instead of saying, where are my black and Latinos brothers and sisters? I'm making sure that we are gonna have a seat wherever we choose to.
Um, Dr. Olson, as our incumbent here from the board, regarding our No Justice No Peace Resolution that was passed in October of twenty twenty by the school board. What does the resolution mean to you and what are you going to do to continue to uphold it throughout your term?
Thank you. First of all, I thank you so much for bringing the resolution forward. And it was an honor to pass this because if I had had it as a social studies teacher and a civics teacher and an AP Gov teacher. I would not have had to spend so much time unpacking what was given to me to make it relevant and help my students understand. What um, American history was missing. Uh, when I often scrapped the curriculum when I started teaching US history and I just had my students explain. What do they know from their backgrounds about what government means and where, how the, if they came from another country? What was the structure like in Honduras or Nicaragua or in El Salvador? And what, what intersections do we have with the United States? And then looking at um, how the border crossed people, not people crossing the border. And exactly as your shirt says, nobody can be el- uh, illegal or undocumented on stolen land. It was always such a heavy lift for me and I think I experienced teaching social studies and civics and government different than some of my peers. Because all of my students were here from other countries recently. And I taught it all in Spanish and I had to translate all of my own curriculum. And you're right, um, Carolina, about the consent decree being the bottom floor of what we need to be doing for our students. We need to do so much more. So what it means for me is Denver Public Schools is moving in the right direction. By having students being seen and known for who they are and having a say in what and how they learn. I really think that's where, how we're gonna increase academic achievement for all our students and provide education. That's just and equitable for everybody. I know that our de- our curriculum department and our academics department is one hundred percent behind this. And so I just wanna keep seeing the work move forward. And what will I do to uphold it? So I've already mentioned on the monitoring reports, I've already mentioned staying in touch with the authors of this resolution. To make sure that your vision is also being seen, but I think also being present. I cannot wait until I can actually go back into schools and spend more time talking with teachers and students and school leaders. And understanding how things are being played out um, across this. I know with the Black Excellence Resolution. Um, Director Bacon and I often joke that it's a beginning. We need a black re- educate, Black Excellence Resolution two point O. Because we find that black excellence plans have been turned in and maybe they um, don't, they lack the voice of the black educators actually in the building. Or there are things that aren't including black families and they haven't had a voice in it. So I think that being present and asking for monitoring reports and then seeing things with my own eyes and listening to people. And hearing and taking that feedback back and saying, this is what we initially intended and this is or isn't what's happening. But in order for me to be able to do that, I also must, I know you didn't ask me the question that you asked Carolina about um, my own. Bias and seeing inequalities in Denver. Yes, I do see inequalities in Denver Public Schools. I think that's what led me to be here today instead of teaching in the classroom at West High School or West Middle School. And what I've committed to throughout my tenure on the board is walking along with our staff on the equity experience. So that I am working on my own bias. Any readings that I get, I'll take wholeheartedly. Some staff have reached out to me and said, you know, you said the board meeting was very offensive, can you switch it? I'm like, of course, that's why we're doing the land acknowledgement now in the beginning. That's why I also would like to lift up the voices of our LGBTQ plus students and staff. They have also said we are not seen in the curriculum, we are not seen across Denver Public Schools as much as we need to be for everybody to feel safe. I know that our suicide rate for LGBTQ plus teens is exceptionally high in the state of Colorado. And so I am continually open. I've let our staff know that, like, don't let the title of board president, don't let the PhD fool you. Like, tell me what your experience is and how can I use my office and my title to improve our educational system for all of our students?
Thank you so much. You both sound like great candidates for the school board. But we would love to hear a quick twenty second elevator speech on why you should be on the DPS school board. Um, starting with Ms. Via Grana.
When I, when I think about why I should be on the school board, I think about my, my dad, um. Who I had the opportunity as, as I was an adult of, did he ever want to go to college? And he said, yes, but couldn't because he was undocumented. And at the age of seventeen, his dreams died early. And if you would have, if you know my dad, he loves building things, he loves science. And it was no surprise when he said he wanted to be an engineer. So I think about my dad, whose dreams were, who ended abruptly. But I also think about how this has not changed and how we, there's this weight and sack, um, responsibility in making sure. That all our kids have the opportunity to truly live out their dreams, whatever it may be, to have a life full of options. And they're choosing. And it's our jobs to make sure that you all have the tools in order to be successful in doing that. And I am committed to all your dreams.
I still believe what I believe four years ago, we need a teacher on the Board of Education. We need somebody who knows what it's like at, to have thirty-seven seventh graders show up at seven nineteen in the morning for literacy. We need somebody who understands um, what it's like to have an advisory first period in the morning for high school students who still aren't awake. To, who has just experienced thirty-three years of teaching elementary, middle and high school in Denver Public Schools. I believe I'm the right person for this because Denver Public Schools has been a part of my life since nineteen eighty-five. And I bring a deep experience in Denver Public Schools. I've seen it change throughout the years and some things still haven't changed. And I'd like to be part of moving our district out of the pandemic with a new superintendent, using my four years as a board member. Um, uh, my thirty-three years as a teacher, my years as a mom. And I actually, I think I didn't mention this, but I adopted, I got custody of two of my students over the course of my tenure as well. So I was a foster parent. So I've had a lot of experience in Denver Public Schools, both as a teacher and as a mom and as a board member. And I think we still need somebody who's had a lot of lived experiences in our schools. Also, all of my travel experience with students, I've learned so much from the families and students on the west side of Denver, eight hundred families. Um, and I traveled together to Washington DC and Europe over twenty-seven years. And it's that lived experiences of late night meetings and after school talks that is really important that you need on the board. So you need the voice of an educator who's always gonna listen to the community and the students. I can't help but not do that because they're my peers. So I really think we need a teacher on the Board of Education.
You can make that too.
That's right, two teachers.
I just wanna show our appreciation and give you guys, thanks for being here today.
Thank y'all. I really appreciate it. You all are awesome. A lot of behind the scenes of what's happening, so I'd love to connect more.
Definitely. Thank you so much for all of your work. Um, I still have the candle, which I use, again, a thoughtful gift. And obviously I still wear my shirt, washing it, hand washing it in cold water so it doesn't fade. But um, I absolutely love it. I wore it this summer and I look forward to working in partnership with you, whether it's one month or whether it's four years and one month. Um, make sure, and no matter who's in my seat, I hope that you will continue to push the board, to continue to work with you, no matter. Who is elected in November because you're doing important work that needs to continue for all students to be able to succeed in Denver Public Schools. So thank you.
Yes, thank you all very much and definitely proud of all your work that you, you are putting into this. It's amazing.
Thank you. We appreciate it. On today's episode, we discussed what motivated our candidates to run for their seats on the board, what they wanna bring to DPS. And their commitment to the education of DPS students. To our board members, regardless of the outcomes on November second, continue doing the work for students because our lives literally depend on it. There are so many other students and student organizations within DPS that want and deserve to be heard. And you are one of the main people who should be in their audience and bring their change into the district. Work to confront the inequities happening in your communities and create a space where student voice is elevated and the center of all decisions being made. You can't effectively serve your students and schools if you're not willing to hear what they have to say.
Stay tuned for our next two episodes with the school board candidates, Vernon Jones, Mike DeGuire, Scott Esteman. Dr. Jose Silva, Jane Shirley and Jean Fashak. You can follow us on our Facebook page, No Justice, No Peace, The Take. Email us at kjkpthetake@gmail.com. Make sure to also subscribe to our YouTube channel, No Justice, No Peace, The Take. Make sure you give us your feedback through our social media.